And they can join us as they come. Good evening, and welcome to this Leta Independent School District Video Conference Meeting of the Board of Trustees. We invite you to share your comments with the board during the public comment portion of our meeting. Citizens input electronic sign up shows the rules for participating at the link provided in the electronic posting notice of our meeting. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into a discussion on the issue raised. This evening, the Board of Trustees is called to order at 5:01. We have a quorum with Mr. Soltero Ramirez, Ms. Connie Woodruff, Ms. Catherine Lucero, and myself, Cruz Ochoa, Mr. Charlie Bustillos, and Mr. Mike Rosales, and Mr. Shane Hagerty will be joining us. They're still running a little bit behind time, so they'll be here. Thank you. Secretary Lucero, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Moment of Silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. And now for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, now on your left-hand side, at the very bottom corner of the screen.
Thank you, Ms. Lucero.
And Mike Rosales has joined us.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Rosales.
I'm here.
Hey, Ms. Mathiessen, do we have any citizens input?
No, sir, we don't.
I almost call you mister. I need glasses. Thank you. Okay, we'll start the workshop. Dr. Delatorre, do you have any presentations for us this evening?
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board, esteemed guests. We do have a presenter with us, facilitator with us, who comes to us from Leadership ISD, one of the many organizations that Mr. Jacinto Ramos is involved with and his work around Lone Star Governance. And at this time, I think some of you are familiar with, know Mr. Ramos, so I will turn it over to him and he'll kind of walk us through what we hope to do over the next couple of days.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Delatorre. Good evening, school board colleagues and friends. I got a chance to visit with President Ochoa and talking about what this evaluation would look like. Want to see if President Ochoa, you want to kind of set the tone for us and what you've done and what this tool is looking like, and then we can begin to field questions and work our way through it?
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you so much for joining us. As you know, this past year has been very challenging. And we come now to the evaluation of our superintendent based on an instrument we had agreed upon last January, I believe. And the things have changed drastically over the year that we've been doing this. So we've been looking at this tool that we have, and because of the changes that have happened, we have to reevaluate how we're going to conduct this evaluation. It has, like I said, it's been very challenging. We do have data, but not the data that is called for in the instrument itself because of SPAR is actually was one of our main data points that has not happened at all, and it seems like it's not going to happen again this year. So this pandemic has really thrown everything into, not chaos, but it has changed everything. So, Mr. Jacinto, if that's okay, if I call you Jacinto, right?
Absolutely, please do.
Jacinto, to help us go through this evaluation instrument, and I welcome everybody's comments and opinions as to how they view this, and we'll come up with a consensus so we can meet again on Wednesday, and then we'll actually meet in closed session so we can determine the results of this evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you, President Ochoa. So as President Ochoa just mentioned, the tool that you have in front of you, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't ask what your thoughts, what your feelings, what your beliefs are around the document that I'm assuming all of you have in front of you or with you. Want to gather some thoughts on the tool and how you all have gotten to this point. What's coming up for you?
Well, let me, okay, this is set up. Go ahead.
I believe that it's very data-oriented, and I think that's a good thing. It is our, it's based on our previous plan, so I know that needs some updating, but I do appreciate the fact that it's not as, there's only a small portion that is subjective, so it keeps us focused on where we need to be as far as our goals and objectives and how that ties into our superintendent and his evaluation.
Anybody else have anything thoughts at this time? Looking at Mr. Rosales.
Monica, for some reason, that document didn't come in through my system. Okay?
Okay. So you're at a disadvantage there, Mr. Rosales. Hopefully she can transmit it to you.
President Ochoa?
Yes?
If you'd like, I can ask Dr. Chacon to go ahead and put it up as a presentation, and I can walk us through an instrument that should be relatively familiar to all of us as it outlines those indicators, those targets that have been, as Ms. Lucero said, part of our initial 2015 Strategic Action Plan that the board at the time adopted. And when they adopted the plan, they also adopted the evaluation instrument. This board did have a chance and did modify the Strategic Action Plan slightly, moving from five goals to three goals and becoming a little more succinct relative to your expectations. And that's that part of the instrument that they basically serve as triggers. Things either happened or they didn't happen. Now, five years ago, in 2015, for most of the indicators, the board felt like a 10-point or a 10 percentage movement was what they expected at minimum in each of these categories. So what you'll see in the document is really the culmination of a five-year Strategic Action Plan and whether or not, in each of the select categories, the academic needle or the needle measuring the three goals didn't like move in the direction that the board wanted back in 2015. And then, of course, as in the past, and what is very helpful to me and my administrative staff are the competencies. And Mr. Ramos will talk to you a little bit more about competencies, what they might look like and reflect in the, our hope is that we can continue to work with Mr. Ramos as we amend, modify the current evaluation instrument to reflect the second Strategic Action Plan and, more importantly, HB3. Brenda, do you have that at your disposal to go ahead and present?
Yes, sir. Let me go ahead and share it for you.
So as you can see, in the area of high academic achievement, which is our first goal, back in 2015, we made a commitment that the district and all district campus would meet standard under the new accountability system. That means no performance less than a C. In 1819, the district failed on account of one alternative school that received a D. We were rated an 89, certainly a high B, likely would have been an A except that TEA does not give As to any school district that has a campus performing at the D level. So we were not given an A rating. If you'll look to the right, it says yes, and an asterisk is located in the top left-hand corner, and that means that based on formative data, benchmark data, as we moved through the 1920 year, it was clear that all of the schools that had earned a rating of C or better were going to continue and earn a rating of C or better. But more importantly, the one alternative school that the year previous had received a D was well on path to also receive not just an anemic C but a solid C. So we felt like, had the 1920 school year been a normal school year, the district would have both met a rating of A and all schools would have received a C or better. Target 1.2 is an example of where, back in 2015, our baseline number was 51%. And as of 2020, that number, in order to meet that 10% increase, would have had to be a 61%. In 1819, that number was 58%, and it speaks to EL students. And if you look at the gray area right to the left of the 58%, what the asterisks on the right-hand column under 1920 are meant to bring your attention to is that, at the beginning of the year, the number was 42. By mid-year benchmark assessment or formative assessments, it was at 47. While one cannot be sure whether or not that number would have reached 61%, we feel like that information is important for the board to at least consider. 1.3, it was 36. In 1819, it was 50, so it exceeded the 10% increase. On 1.4, the baseline number, for example, on target 1.4 was 28%. So in 1819, it was at 71%, far exceeding the 10% growth. 1.5 is questionable. 1.6 started at 79 and in 1819 was at 95. 1.7 started at 18%. In 1819, it was 28%. That indicates the goal was reached. 1.8, the baseline was 100%. Our goal has always been 90%. As more and more students are included in Algebra I during the eighth grade, it becomes more and more likely that you will not be at 100%. Next page, Dr. Chacon. Or the ones that I missed, there you go. And down the line. So that section is all very objective, and you all certainly have, you know, the luxury and the latitude to take a look at that, to determine, and I think be very proud of the work that you've accomplished, that we've all accomplished when it comes to those objective numbers. Goal number two deals with our people, including our employees, and we've always had a goal of a four out of five on a like scale. You can see in the table that, beginning in the fall of 2015, 4.08 went back down to 3.98, fall 4.01, fall 17, 3.96, fall 2018, 4, fall 2019, 3.98. So that goal was not met. On the parent satisfaction survey, that goal has always been met. Parents have always been very positive about their experience and their children's experience in our school district. That number has rarely fallen below 4.3. And so with a goal of 4.0, that has been met every year of the five-year Strategic Action Plan. If you look at the district support services, that's how our principals and instructional leadership teams believe the central office staff is doing again. Four being the goal, since 2015, we've never had anything that remotely looks like less than 4.0. We also introduced the Service Excellence Initiative back in 2016-17. We had, as you know, received a lot of parent concerns, and those have been reduced to, or by 70%. So 103 down to 30. Prior to 103, it was 128. Prior to 128, it was 216 parent concerns. So if you look at the longitudinal data in the table, you'll see that our parent complaints and concerns have gone from 47% in 1617 to 8% in 1920. And then the last, but very important, has to do with our fiscal solvency, our fiscal strength. The target 3.1, relative to the bond, everything continues to meet the board's goals and standards. And by that, we mean we currently present projects to the board on a consistent basis. And the more important piece is that the majority, with very few exceptions, are always on time, under budget, oftentimes performed by local labor. And we've been very happy with almost all of the projects that have been part of both the 2015 and the current 2019 bond. And then reliance on categorical monies has gone from a 29% reduction relying on categorical or federal funds to now less than 15% of our dependency is on federal monies or categorical monies that we receive from the federal government. And that's the, again, the area that Ms. Lucero and you all know is very objective and data-driven, with the exception of those areas where we did not have the data but have provided you with at least an idea of those formative assessments, those benchmark assessments that may give you an idea of how we were doing prior to the catastrophic disruption, interruption to our instructional program in our district almost a year ago in March. And then, as is the case every year, in the area where I think I and our senior-level administrators, our cabinet, and our principals learn the most from you as to areas of interest and areas where the board would like to see special attention, special effort, moving intentionally and purposefully are the, what we call, competencies. Mr. Ramos is familiar with this element. In a superintendent's evaluation, it comes under different names, but it is those areas that may not live specifically in an objective world and that invite or welcome, as they should, a more subjective or holistic look at from a board member and aggregate board's perspective. Vision, communication, leadership. And this is typically where we ask you to reflect and list some ideas. It is a light switch. Either you feel like I've met your expectations or I have failed to meet expectations, and then the narrative, I think, allows each board member to give examples, both positive examples as well as being critical friends to the superintendent about the select areas that are included here. And then that becomes important to me and my team as to areas where we can celebrate and where, in some cases, more attention, more focus is required. Any questions? On the evaluation instrument that is meant to be the culminating document to the 2015 Vision 2020 Strategic Action Plan and will probably serve as at least a starting point as you start to consider how you'd like to evaluate the 2025 Vision or the Vision 2025, the Encore Plan, that's supposed to serve as our blueprint and as our guide for the next five years in the school district, knowing that the first year has been this unprecedented and very unique 2019-20 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Delatorre.
Absolutely.
Yeah, looking at the instrument, looking at the data, looking at, welcome, Charlie. It has been a trying year for everybody, our teachers and our support staff, and everybody knows that things have changed. We just don't conduct business the same anymore. So the measures, how we, you know, have changed, and we need to be smart about that. And I'm sure we are. I mean, this board is very cognizant of what's been going on. We all have somebody or somehow somebody working for, as a teacher, or working in a school district, and we know that things are not the same anymore. And I think with Mr. Ramos here, I think we can navigate through this as best as possible and come up with a resolution that will satisfy all of our board members here. And we can come up with a plan for the next five years, although this year, I think it's still very different. We can't plan like this for the next five years because, hopefully, we'll be done with this situation soon. My last, maybe the rest of the year, but looking forward, five years from now, I'm sure that we'll look back and say, wow, that was something else. But we still need to plan, and we need to come up with a good formula that will work maybe for this one year, and then we think of something else that we can come back for the next four years, completing our five-year strategic plan. So that's where Mr. Ramos is going to help us or at least inform us of some other possibilities and choices we might have to develop these plans. Any other comments, guys, that you might have? Or if not, Mr. Ramos, do you have more to say?
I do. First, I'll say that, as I've been working with boards around the state, not everyone has the formative assessment data that you all have. You all, your superintendent and the team have been able to get you data points even without a star. That is to be, in my opinion, celebrated. Also, the challenges and the opportunities that lie for the board and the superintendent team are to be able to entertain an idea to shift, since this one has seen its life, you know, come through to fruition, and you all have done it well in the monitoring of the data and the points. You do have an opportunity for growth into what TEA has put into place, whether it be through Lone Star Governance or the bones of Lone Star Governance, which really zeroes in and focuses on House Bill 3, which is early years reading, early years math, and college and career readiness. The best way that we've put it around the state is, I'll speak for what was true for my board, we were a mile wide but only an inch deep. We were measuring, trying to measure everything, but we really couldn't track how it was impacting student outcomes. The conversation you're hearing around the state is a major shift to being laser-focused on student outcomes in those three that the state has pretty much put on all the districts around the state. It does leave room for two more goals, but those two more goals are also supposed to be focused on student outcomes. Now, you know, I'm hearing that here in this report, finances and things of that nature are important, great. The governance framework allows for what they call constraints or boundaries. And these are important for a superintendent to know where he or she ought to be mindful. These are what we could call landmines. So what is important to Isleta Board, you as a governing body? And it is important to communicate that very clearly to your superintendent. So I agree with President Ochoa that it looks like your framework has been set for this year. It looks like you all have your evaluation tool pretty much for this one, and you'll walk through it on Wednesday. What you have is that opportunity to be able to get laser-focused, aligning with what the rest of the state is doing. And I'll also tell you, I mentioned this to President Ochoa, your data points are really good in comparison to a lot of districts similar to you. So you know what that means as a trustee when I go out to the community is, there's a lot to celebrate here. And yes, absolutely, we're a continuous improvement board, and we're not satisfied until we do better and we get better. But the progression that you all have been able to show over this five-year plan is to be celebrated, and the opportunities for growth is also to be put on the table. So I've told your team that I am here at your service to help and support if you so choose to go that route. I plan on being with you on Wednesday, God willing. Then I can also give you some examples of how an evaluation tool can really be fine-tuned to be completely objective, much as like what you've got here. You've got a lot of objectivity, but imagine an evaluation where you could probably be done in 15, 20 minutes because the data points will speak for themselves. And you all set the goals, and your superintendent and the team tell you what formative assessments, what are the techniques they're going to use. But we also bring a new culture, which I'll wrap up with this one. Imagine a board meeting where 50% of your time is spent on student outcomes. Imagine a board meeting where every quarter, you know if you're going up or you're going down or you're being stagnant. Imagine that as a governing board member, you know what those numbers look like at the minimum of every quarter. And you as an informed board member can tell the superintendent quarterly, hey, we're getting better, we're getting worse, what are we going to do? What are you going to change? How are we going to get better? And that's how governing boards are able to stay aligned and stay focused on student outcomes. So I'll pause there and see what's coming up for you. Thoughts, feelings, beliefs?
Anybody have any thoughts on this or anything else? I think House Bill 3 has a bigger impact on how we're going to develop our strategic plan, especially that. And I know we're not going to do it all on Wednesday night. I mean, it's just the start. And we'll probably have to have more meetings and work together again closely to align the, and I'm sure that when they did that five years ago, I wasn't present. I mean, I know some of our board members have been here longer than I have, and I'm sure they put in a lot of work and a lot of thought into this strategic plan. So I'm sure we'll do it again this So I'm sure we'll do it again this coming months. So Monday would be sort of like, get us initiated, get us kicked off. How are we going to do this, especially in relation to House Bill 3? So one of the things I do want to make sure is that the competencies, make sure you have your thoughts written out so we can translate them and work and talk about them on Wednesday. That way, Ms. Lucero has graciously volunteered to be taking the notes and putting it together so we can provide it to our superintendent and his staff. That way, you know, we all know where we're coming from. But I think the data speaks for itself. Like I said, this year has been something else, you know, nothing none of us expected, none of us expected this. But then that's been not only here, but throughout the country and throughout the state. And, you know, we'll keep at it. And it's to the benefit of our kids, our students. It's, that's the ultimate goal is to make, like Mr. Ramos says, we just got to work at it and become better and better at it. We're just never satisfied. And if you have any other questions, if not... No questions? We will be ready for Wednesday then at 6:00 PM. Remember, we're going to come in a little early. Listen, Matthew said, what did you say we had to go to?
It's going to be in the Guadalupe Room downstairs, close to the theater and close to the elevators where we're going to do our COVID testing.
And it takes about 15 minutes. So I know that some of you are still working and running, you know, going to be a little late, but try to be there, get tested so we can get... The goal is 6:00 PM, okay? And we understand. So there's not any other questions?
Just for clarity, President Ochoa, all of the trustees will get the sheets that will allow them to type in or write in the narrative for the current competencies. And when would you like them to make those available to Lucero?
Probably that evening.
Oh, so you'll do it that evening?
Yeah. Because we need to discuss and go over it and kind of bring the language and how we how we communicate this in a uniform way instead of having... We all talk differently, so we all write differently. So I want to have it kind of a uniform way of presenting this to you instead of having it five, seven different manners of writing.
And what?
And it gives us the opportunity to share our ideas too. You know, it's something that I didn't think of, Mr. Rosales or Mr. Ramírez.
Right.
Or Ms. Lucero or Ms. Woodruff can, you know, bring to light, which is the great thing about this, that it's done together.
Okay, and so what we will do is we'll start the meeting and then myself and the senior-level administrators will log out and allow the board, Mr. Ramos and your legal counsel, if you'd like, as much time as you need. And then we'll be made aware when the board is ready to invite the superintendent back into the meeting. I'll rejoin you and then we'll go from there?
Yes, and that'll be at the Isleta Room, I believe. Yes, so it's going to be open. We're going to be social distancing and, you know, it's just going to be, I think it's going to be very fruitful. Considering we haven't been together in such a long time, that I think it's just going to become a very productive meeting itself. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment very briefly.
No, sir, Mr. Sanz.
I just, being that Sinto is on the line, it gives me great privilege to see these numbers. They may not be all that, well, they may not be complete perfectly, but taking into account 2015 through today, in spite of the obstacles and what you've mentioned repeatedly about this past year, I've got to commend our leadership, our administration for when the difficulties started. They have proven to me repeatedly, they don't sit behind ways of not doing. They're out there constantly trying to make things happen. And I just want to make that comment before we go into the nitty-gritty, if you will, Dr. Lataore. I want to thank you. I want to thank all your administration for that. It's not an easy task, it's not an easy chore, and the difficulties come daily. And so I appreciate my opportunity. I humbly really take this position seriously, but more than anything else, I cannot express my gratitude for having to have the opportunity to work with such professional people. And I think, Sinto, you can, just by our numbers, that's a testament of the fact that the quality of leadership here in El Paso, in our district, in Isleta, in the pencil district, is superb. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Sanz. I totally agree with you. One thing I do have to point out is our teachers. I have two grandkids that are just... If I wasn't quite here before, I'm quieter now because they are just, you know, hard to keep on track. But the teachers, teachers, they take it to heart to try to get them and to motivate it and to work hard. And, you know, the teachers call me and say, I'm sorry, Mr. Ochoa, I don't want to bother you. It's not a bother. It's really helping me understand the effort that they're putting into not only my kids, but everybody else's kids in Isleta. These teachers have really gone way beyond what the expectations were. And as well as the administration, you know, I worked, I've dealt with some of them and they're just, you know, they haven't given up and I thank you all. Mr. Rosales, you have something else?
I was remiss, I was remiss in not including our teachers. But when I see the whole packet, I mean the teachers as well as the administration. So teachers, by all means, tremendous effort, tremendous effort. And we thank you for it.
Thank you all, thank you all. I mean, it's been a trying year, but we're doing well. Any other comments? Questions, concerns? Everybody knows what we're going to do on Wednesday. Meet on Wednesday at Isleta Room, be there a little early so you can get tested. And I hope to see all your smiling faces, even though we still have to wear a mask. But, you know, I know you'll be smiling behind those masks. So, all right, if no other questions, thank you all. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Woodruff, motion to adjourn. We're adjourned, thank you all. We'll see you on Wednesday at 6:00.